Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
I would like to call the West Reserve Local School Board meeting to order, please. May I have your call?
Lisa Powell.
Present.
Marcos.
Present.
Richard Levens.
Present.
Melissa Potts.
Present.
Tracy Sett.
Present.
Would I rise and pledge to the flag, please?
The citizens of the United States of America, for which this stands, one nation.
It's nice to have a big, we call it a big crowd here because formerly we don't, so welcome, everybody, and thanks for coming. I know it's hard to get out of the house once you get home from work and everything, so we appreciate it. We're going to start off with our treasurer's recommendations. Oh, sorry, yes, you do. You have to be sent first.
Mr. Sin, I'm going to read that look of office to you. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Western Reserve Local School District of Mahoning County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and thereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified? If so, please answer "I do."
I do.
Your official.
Yay!
Congratulations.
Yes. And as I read the agenda, I see that the Operation Keesake is next, so I apologize, I was jumping the gun here, so...
Do you want Danielle to explain to you all that?
What, can you explain?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can flick and try to get it together, everyone. Uh, peer leadership team. Uh, we have a peer leadership team here through Operation Keesake, and this is called the Friends for Friends campaign. And each year, part of the Friends for Friends campaign is, um, talking to the kids and getting their ideas of what are the issues that they're dealing with. And then, they identify those as a group, and a script is written. The kids write it. Jay is a huge, huge, plays a huge role in that, in perfecting the script to make it very professional. Um, the kids actually try out for the parts. And, uh, we had, uh, Taylor Knab was our lead, and then Abby Stanek. Anna Bell Heim was in, and also sang the song, um, that's a part of it. And we have many kids, probably, you'll see, you'll see, we probably have around 20 total doing it. So, our video, to this day, has, I was going to look it up before I got in here, over a million views.
Wow.
In over, how many votes? In five weeks. The biggest ever, right?
Yes.
Biggest ever.
Not the most views, but in the shortest...
How many views do we have, or how many votes do we have right now, likes?
Yeah, over 20,000 likes.
Over 20,000 likes. We were at, we were close to 10,000 after, after voting started. So, a week after voting started, so for our...
Congratulations, you guys.
So anyways, we, um, they put on a film festival at the DUR in downtown Youngstown. And the film festival then led to, Best Actress was Taylor Knab, out of all the other schools that were there. Best adult person was somebody else, Kelly Brezner, can't remember her name.
She worked for us, she acted.
Yeah, and then we also won Best Film.
Wow.
So, yeah, so we did.
Congratulations.
So we are here to present your trophy this evening. And I just would like to say, um, my name is Deborah Landis on the Program Liaison for OK Inc. And I just want to say, first of all, um, kudos to Mrs. Madus, because actually, she, we could not do this without her, number one. Um, she has pulled these students together, she selected these students, and she did an amazing job, number one, selecting the right students for the project. And number two, when the very first thing we do is come up with a topic, and this is the Friends for Friends campaign, so the entire campaign is based on, okay, you as a friend, you get information about a friend of yours, whether that information is your friend's being bullied, or maybe your friend is in a dating abusive relationship, or maybe your friend is using drugs or alcohol. Well, Mrs. Madus came and said this year, you know what? We would like to make a short film on the topic of cutting. And Jay and I were like, huh, what? Oh, I don't know. So, we went back to our office and we had to talk, you know, to the powers that be, and we thought, wow, th- this is a really super serious topic. And so, I remember I called Mrs. Madus, I said, "Mrs. Madus, do you think, you know, she had some reasons for this?" And she said, "No, I think this is the way to go." So we said, "Okay, let's do it." Your film has over 1 million views, 1 million views, and it's only been on YouTube for five weeks.
Wow.
Think about that. And the comments, all the comments are listed. Actually, the truth is, it's, you've hit a nerve, big time. I've never seen comments like these. So you are the winner of the Short Film Award, and we had a trophy to present to you. And so, on behalf of OK Inc., we would like to present this to you, Mr. McGlynn, with your thanks and your support.
Thank you very much.
And, um, it, yes. And with your permission, we'd like to just show you the last several minutes of the film, and then we have a special treat with Ms. Annabelle Heim. So I'm going to turn it over to our project leader, Jay Brownlee. Thank you, Jay.
Before Jay starts, I gotta tell you, the cutting, Danielle can tell you, cutting has become such a huge issue with young youth and adults. Uh, it's, it's not just limited to certain places, it's all over the place. It's the way kids are trying to gain attention and to deal with some of the pressures they're handling. So, it's a very touchy, touchy issue with parents and outside folks, but it's something that needed addressed.
Yeah, and it is.
You know, a million views is just incredible.
That is.
Yeah, it's insane.
And that's all of the world. I mean, cutting doesn't necessarily mean suicide.
No.
It's a coping skill. It's a coping, an unhealthy coping skill, so I think we need...
It's, yeah, it's coping. Some ways, kids cope that, cut themselves. You know, high where they cut, they may cut their thighs, and they cut their, you know. It's just not what you think, it just...
Right, I've heard, yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah, if you can watch this video, you'll get an idea.
Right, I'm going to do that.
Yeah, this, we're just going to show you a clip, but...
Um, real quick, he's my presenter, right? And I don't, you probably like me, you don't understand, like, why is this a big issue? But we've had, your video's had over 4,000 comments. People are interested in this, and there's a lot of kids who jump on. You can see they're talking about how long they've been cutting, why they're cutting. And, uh, I'm really surprised by it, actually. You know, like Mr. McGlynn said, don't really understand why this is an issue, um, but we're encouraging friends, you see somebody's doing this, to help them get help from somebody who does understand, and help them get the help that they really need. So, that's the whole gist of the Friends for Friends campaign. And, so I'm just going to go ahead and play the last five minutes of it. You can get on YouTube and watch the rest of it if you're interested. It's a 10-minute video.
Yeah, the key is if you could save one kid from this city. That's important, that's great to do, just saving one. The million views, you know you're reaching a lot of different kids.
Hey, Vanessa? What do you want? I'm worried about you. You're my friend. Friends don't tell on each other, Christina. I was stuck in Mrs. Engel's office for 20 miserable minutes while she cornered me with her stupid questions. It was humiliating. You can't keep doing this, you need help. I'm done talking to you. Wait, I just, I want you to know that I'll always be there for you, for anything, okay? What are you doing? I found this in your room today. I got a call from the school counselor. Vanessa, let me see. Let me see! You happy now? I am consumed by all the pain I feel inside of my soul. I just can't let it go. Now I just want to escape. So I take hold of the blade to release all the pain, but the pain won't go away. Want to cut it out of my mind, the way that I feel inside, but the pain won't go away. Vanessa? Christina. Look. Is everything okay? Are you all right? Christina, I need you. I need your help. Okay, 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 listen, I'm, I'm getting ready for the basketball game. Do you want to go? I could come pick you up. Yeah. I'd like that. Okay, all right, I'll be right back.
All right, well, we were going to let you hear the song during the credits, but we're going to do one better. We're actually going to let her sing it right here.
We just spread this on her, and she just came from dance class, so... She's like, "Should I dress up?" I'm like, "No, just get here."
She's impromptu.
She is.
All right, so this is very impromptu, so, let's see how she does. All right. I have no idea.
She can do it all.
Are you ready, Hannah?
Sure.
Um, can I just say one thing real quick? Uh, I just posted a video of her doing the live performance at our film festival. It's on YouTube, if you want to check that out. And also, um, what we're doing here is we're giving youth a voice and positive messages that I think their peers need to hear. So, um, we have all kinds of songs that we've put together to have positive messages on these kinds of issues. Uh, they're sung by really talented youth that are, uh, role models in their schools. So, as you guys are leaders in the community, and you have some kind of church event, or some kind of community outreach event, or some kind of school event, there's a way that maybe you can incorporate some of these youth into that event. That would be awesome, you can give us a call. And we have kids that are looking to share their talents, and share their messages, and that kind of thing, just like Annabelle did today. So, all right, that's it, thanks.
Thank you.
Annabelle, who else do you sing for?
Huh?
Who else do you sing?
Who do I sing with?
You do, you do some touring too, correct?
Yeah, I sing with, um, local theaters.
She does a lot, she goes to a lot of places. She starred in our concerts and our dramas.
Wow. What grade are you in?
I'm sophomore.
Sophomore.
Great.
Good student, and good.
Thank you.
Great singer.
Very touching, nice, thank you. Beautiful.
She's not the Spanish girl.
She's really exotic, she's a good girl.
Thank you.
God, it's, wow.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing, though, thank you so much. Goodness.
Wow. Talk that. I can't. Goodness. Yeah.
It's just great to open up more things to kids.
Well, you don't, I, I never realized that. I've heard of it, but I never... And what a song.
Would you say cutting is more prevalent in girls and females than males?
It is, but males do it.
Males do cut.
Is that a current song? Like, is that somebody write that song about?
Jay wrote it.
Oh, he wrote the song?
Yeah, I wrote it, and then last year, we, somewhere in the school here...
Yeah, we came on a Saturday, I think, it was a Saturday, we spent the day. And recorded it. And she had never heard it before. And she came in, he showed her the lyrics, showed her the song, and they left us.
So eventually, it'd be on iTunes, Spotify, and we'd play that kind of...
Wow, neat. Pretty cool. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Your other teacher was in the film right over there, too.
Oh, yes.
My pleasure. It was awesome, to be such a part of something so meaningful. Oh, yeah. We wanted it to be good.
His acting was a hell of a...
I can, that doesn't surprise me.
He's a hilarious character.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Take care, guys.
Okay. Now, boring stuff, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
All right, treasurer's recommendations. It's recommended that the minutes of the September 14th, 2017 Regular Board Meeting of Education be approved as mail to each member in advance of the meeting.
Second.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin? Motion carried. Number two, it is recommended that the September 2017 financial reports be approved and the September 2017 listing of bills be approved as mail to each member in advance of the meeting.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Motion carried. Superintendent's recommendations? And this is, I don't know if I... This is the second reading of the new policy on the basic curriculum program.
This is a new, new, uh, policy from the state. What else is new? Basically, what they're talking about is running the white form process, and our basic curriculum program should be set up to not only reach kids right now, but prepare them for the future. And when you look at preparing for the future with our Prepare for Success, we've done a great job of those kids moving on, uh, and going into college and finishing on time. So, a lot of that is the things we're doing currently.
So, on that note, number one, it is recommended that new board policy file, IGA, Basic Curriculum Program, be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number two, it is recommended that the following Business Advisory Council Resolution be approved. Approved as a member district of the Mahoning County Educational Service Center, Western Reserve School District is adopting the MCESC Business Advisory Council as the Western Reserve Local School District's Business Advisory Council meeting the requirements of the Ohio Advice Code 3313.82 and House Bill 49.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
This came out of the budget bill this summer, the House Bill 49, where every district must adopt the, um, Business Advisory Council. So far, 13 of the districts in Mahoning County have gone with. The Career Center of Exile already have it set up through their connections, and some of them are businesses from here, that's from different communities. You do have the option, if you choose, to go to the court meetings. They're open to our board and to our central office. So you can go to those, those meetings if you choose, you don't have to. But they basically are representing tri-county area, and Business Advisory Council. They have a lot more people coming in than just small groups.
Any other questions? Number three, it is recommended that Carla Duda, Vicky Victors, and Kathy Ewing be approved as unpaid volunteer ski club advisors for the 2017-2018 school year.
So moved.
So moved.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell? Yes. Motion carried. Number four, it is recommended to add Breanna Litter to the certified substitute list.
Second.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number five, it is recommended that the following substitute hourly rates be approved. Secretaries, $9, janitors, $9, cooks, $9, and aides, $9.
So moved.
Second.
Currently, currently, we are at $7.60 an hour. We're, we're well below...
Wow.
Uh, the new minimum wage is coming up, and we're finding it very difficult to get people who want to come in and work for $7.60.
Yeah.
So, $9 is more what is going on in the area, so it makes us a lot more competitive. And we're also, Kathy and I are going to look at some of that with substitute teaching, raising those rates, to try and see. We have some in the, we have three sitting in the hopper, ready for FBI, DCI. We hired Breanna today, but, you know, we're just...
Waiting on paperwork from the state. And I can't do anything until I get it.
You're on. So, we're looking at raising that rate for our teacher subs, as well to try and draw them out, a little bit more, be more competitive with some of the other schools to the east, I guess. Well, never compete with Youngstown, Mike, I know that.
Who wants to? Okay, hey, Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, there's a very long bundle, I'm sorry, there is.
It's long because we have, we have to...
Wait, for stuff for the stage. I got you.
All the stuff to come out.
All right, number one, it is recommended to approve the agreement between West Reserve Local School District and Tudor Physical Therapy for the athletic trainer for the 2017-18 football team.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number two, it is recommended to add Emma Broke and Riley Miller to the athletic worker list.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number three, it is recommended to hire Pasquale Del Torrio as the head boys' basketball coach for the 2017-18 school year as per the salary schedule in effect.
So moved.
Second.
Gotcha. Mrs. Potts? Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number four, it is recommended to hire Jacob Satchok as the assistant varsity basketball coach for the 2017-18 school year as per the salary schedule in effect.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number five, it is recommended to hire Joseph T. Sorenski as the eighth-grade boys' basketball coach for the 2017-18 school year as per the salary schedule in effect.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number six, it is recommended to hire Dominic Del Torrio Senior as the seventh-grade boys' basketball coach for the 2017-18 school year as per the salary schedule in effect.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number seven, it is recommended to approve Robert Makowski as an unpaid volunteer boys' basketball coach for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number eight, it's recommended to hire Stephen Miller as the head girls' varsity basketball coach for the 2017-18 school year as per the salary schedule in effect.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number nine, it's recommended to hire Jeffrey Brogan as the assistant varsity girls' basketball coach for the 2017-18 school year as per the salary schedule in effect.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number 10, it is recommended to hire Sissy Barker as the eighth-grade girls' basketball coach for the 2017-18 school year as per the salary schedule in effect.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Levens?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number eleven. It's recommended to hire Tamara Leon as the seventh grade girls' basketball coach for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year as per the salary schedule in effect.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Number twelve, I'd like to table this, please. Number thirteen. It is recommended to add Amy Kale to the substitute nurse list.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number fourteen. It is recommended to hire Ryan Jones as the ninth grade boys' basketball coach for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year as per the salary schedule in effect.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sin?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, moving right along. Principal's report.
It seems like we've been in school a really long time. It's been a month. It's been one month. There's a lot going on. One thing that I just want to start with is Jen Moss is a phenomenal teacher, and she's going to be recognized. We don't know if she, what she won or whatever. We have a, every year, we have the Partnership for Twenty-Third Century, Twenty-First Century Skills or whatever, that partnership. We recognize...
It's the Excellence Education with two sixteen partnership in excellence. All of the area, four or five county area, that they promote education excellence and they award, they award people with, it's really, you get a little certificate and you get something, but it's recognition.
It's awesome.
And Jen was nominated for the very thing she showed you last year, with the math, everyday math.
Oh, yes. She... For that and a couple of other things that she does, it's, they're just, she reaches children. And so she was selected. So she will go on Tuesday, our teachers are, we are, in fact, I didn't really know this, but we, at the curriculum council meeting today, they said we were in the top one hundred in the state for our performance index. So we did really, I mean, the teachers are working hard, and we've got something really good going on here. And really, those growth measures where we're showing that, what that's showing, it's the area that you really want to do well in because it's showing that you're moving kids from where they are up at least a year. And we did really well compared, and we really improved in our scores over the last year. So Dallas, with the high school and middle school, they're being recognized, the elementary schools being recognized, and then Jen, that was just kind of the icing on the cake with Jen being, yes.
They get to go free.
What'd you say?
So they pay for you to go.
That's right. Yes.
This year it's at, this year it's at, at the Career Center, the Brooks Center, it took so many people.
Nice.
Debbie was nominated for third grade, the rating scores as well as attendance, and Dallas was...
Congratulations.
...awarded for the dual enrollment, our college grad plus credentialing through the Career Center, and also matriculation. Matriculation is how do our kids do as they move out of here into college? How many finish within four years? How many finish at two-year schooling too with their associates? And we're very high in that area, so we received those three awards at the high school and then two awards at the elementary.
That's huge.
I was surprised Kelly Richards would not get one for eighth grade math because she had almost the high school in the county, in the tri-county area, ninety percent. But the problem is, we don't, we didn't have enough kids. This year, we will with the algebra because they look back at algebra. So...
So next year. There's a lot of, there's a lot of very good things going on with the collaboration. You know, the old faculty meetings, we still have faculty meetings, but like every other month, we do that. And the other, like this month, where I'm meeting with grade level teachers and content area teachers to really look at, what are you doing? Like, one of the big things that we looked at was homework. Like, we're starting to differentiate homework because not everybody needs the same homework. And the teachers at first are like, well, I don't know about all this, but it's working. I mean, you're differentiating, what do they need practice on? Because that's what homework is. It's practicing, it's preparing maybe for the next day, that kind of thing. So they're doing those, they're really kind of stepping out of the box a little bit, out of the traditional. So good things are happening. We've had some after-school programs. We had martial arts, which we did last week, and then they did a big program at ATA Martial Arts, and I went every day to watch them in the gym, and they were having a ball. And the really cool thing was, the instructor taught them about, it was all about safety. If stranger danger, if somebody comes and tries to grab your arm, what do you do? And how do you, how can you like hold your hand and pull your arm up? And so they were learning martial arts, but they were actually learning useful purposes for it. So it's pretty cool. Lisa Ambrosia is currently doing art, and her art classes are so big now that she has to do K to two and three to five. So Tuesdays, K to two, Thursdays, three to five. And then she's going to do a snack and paint where parents come and paint with their kids. It's painting and sculpting and all kinds of things. She does all kinds. Tuesday, she made slime and they made ghosts out of slime. So, I mean, just really neat, kind of off-the-hook things, so. And then I will be doing in November a STEAM program, Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math, after school. We're going to start doing some 3D modeling and some kind of inventiveness and working as a scientific team and things like that. So that'll be fun, letting me be in the classroom again. I am so grateful that you guys made me Sarah Smith because she is such a little ball of energy. And PBIS is creating positive behavioral and structural support. If you can have a good environment for kids to learn in, it makes all the difference in the world. Kindergarteners go, Mrs. Brolly, you're always happy. And I go, because I'm with you is why. Because they are, they want that, they want that good environment, and they thrive. So we decided to do, last year, we did a couple of things with rewards and encouragement. We decided to do pop-up lunches. So if we really notice a class just going over the top, being in the hallway, they're being respectful, was our theme for last month, and they're really doing a great job, and we don't do it once a month, we do it whenever, we just say, we've noticed this class and they're really doing well, and they're accumulating, you know, their We Are cards. And so we'll just, Mrs. Alexander's class, for example, was the one, we said, anyone that has, what, her goal was five, anyone that has five We Are cards, we don't take the cards from them because they use them for other things, they get to do a pop-up lunch. So we had lunch outside, and we had tablecloths and balloons, and we just had a really fun pop-up lunch. And we're going to have one maybe in Mr. McGlynn's office or one in the art room. They love having lunch with the teachers and the adults or whatever. They do, they love doing that. So that's one of the things. We have a shout-out board in the cafeteria, and we give shout-outs for kids who are actually being responsible with their voices and using level one or two voices in the cafeteria. So we have, or somebody that just did something nice, we can put shout-outs up on the shout-out board in the cafeteria. And then we're having a nine-weeks party, we're going to have a disco dance for this nine weeks. So if they meet the goal for their classroom with their We Are tickets, they get to go to the disco dance for this nine weeks. The next one is going to be, we're going to go down to a basketball game at YSU during the day. Mr. McGlynn's going to be featured as our dancer.
You've not seen me dance.
In my house.
You don't want to see it. You don't want to see it.
We're going to DJ and everything, so it's going to be fun. So this is three years ago. Sharing stories. So anyway, it's really working hard, and it's not as much the reward as it is just getting kids together and saying, hey, you did a great job. It's not giving them something, it's just saying, let's celebrate what you do. So anyway, right now, we're in the midst of assessments, datas, and progress monitoring. But we're doing some really good things with really talking about kids and looking deeply at them, and especially the kids who are either struggling or the kids who really need to be pushed forward. Are we really challenging them? Are we taking them to as far as we can? So we're having a lot of conversations about kids and we're meeting about them, so, and really monitoring progress. Those have to be turned in, so we're really, you know, being intentional about looking at these kids and not just saying, oh, they got a hundred on their spelling test and that whole thing. You know, Debbie, when you guys monitor them, do you ever like teach them how to study? I noticed that with my kids going through this system, they didn't really know how to study. They don't. And that, and that may sound silly, but like how, going forward, like what are, is your thought process on going, you know, starting that at a young age? Right. And one of the things that we look at is, what are, like, and it's little simple things, like homework is a big thing on study skills. Looking at your homework and reading ahead, that's a big thing now, is reading... But they look at it like a negative aspect, instead of, you know, this is helping you practice, like you said earlier. Right. Practice for your class for tomorrow. They look at it like that. So one of the things that they look at now, because right now, that inquiry-based learning or that, were they really that conceptual-based learning? And that's kind of a chancy word, conceptual-based learning, because not everybody learns that way. But it's like posing a problem to kids. Like, a lot of times, the teachers, and this is from when I started teaching a long time ago, teachers would get up and they'd just deliver information. We spew information like crazy. And instead of doing that, going and posing a problem to kids, you know, I was watching a lesson on weather, and they were doing weather instruments, and there was a video with weather instruments on. Instead of that, giving kids some tools and saying, you know what, we need to see how fast the wind's going. How about, I'm going to give you, you know, forty-five minutes, I want you to look at some, I want you to go to the computer, here's some books, things, look and see what you can find, and then I want you to use the stuff over here on the stand, where you can get anything you want, and I want you to try to build something that you think can measure the direction of weather's better for elementary, the direction the weather's going. And they will, and they'll do it, and it's not going to be perfect. And they're going to go outside and they're going to check it, and then they're going to come back and say, what happened? Well, you know, the straw blew off or whatever. Okay, well, what are you going to do now? Because, okay, it didn't work, so what do you do now? It's a longer process, and that's what teachers sometimes get tied up with. Dennis will probably, you know, he'll, you know, agree with it. You get tied up because you have this time period that you have to get this stuff covered in. That's not how learning happens. So sometimes, it's giving kids a purpose for really learning. So instead of saying, go home and practice your spelling words and write them three times each, and, I mean, we all have spelling lists, we all hate a spelling list, and memorize those spelling words. So we need to learn how to spell, but there's other ways you can do that. You can, you know, you can have them highlight words or pick words out of things, or this is the word, this is the word, I think, chat. Find three other words that you can come up with, or five other words that you can come up with that rhyme with chat or that are synonyms of chat. You're still doing vocabulary, you're just doing it a different way, it's making it more engaging. It's mundane. Yeah. And boring, and they don't want to do it after the fifth time of writing it by. Yeah. And so it's doing, so we're looking at those kind of things. It's just like us. You don't want to read something if you don't have a purpose for doing it. Right. So it's giving them that purpose. That's one thing, I think, our math program does a really good job of, the one we got last year, it does a really good, it's really good. Like Stacy Mercer, I was in her class, and they were doing surface area, and that's a hard concept for some kids, you know, they do blocks and things. She went to Home Depot, and she said, all right, this is, she had a big area, and it was funky shaped, and she said, I need to tile this. This is going to be the floor of my house, I need to tile it. And she actually had tiles, and they had to figure out, and they had pieces of tiles too. And they had to put, they got it, they got the concept. And so it's, and then they know what to use it for. And so it's and then they know what to use it for. I mean, people that if you're, I'm gonna tile my house, or people that do this for a living have to do this. So it's making it real. That's what you hear a lot of real world connections and giving them a purpose. They call they call it the flipped classroom. So kids go home.
It's so concrete.
It is.
So abstract. And you need it to be concrete because I, you know, you don't understand it then.
Right. Because the fifth grader might not be ready for it.
Right.
And they may not have a lot to hook it on to. The the flipped classroom. So when you go home tomorrow, you know what, guys, tomorrow, we're gonna study the culture of Zimbabwe. That's what we're gonna study. Tonight, I need you to look at this because I need you to find out what musical instruments they played, what they were made of, and what was their agriculture like. So they go home and they have, they know they have to do that because in class, you're gonna be, they're gonna be doing something with that information. So it's not just read this for the sake of reading. So we're really, I'm not gonna tell you we're perfect at it, but we're working toward it. And so we're starting it.
That's awesome.
So that's it.
Good thinking.
So that's, yeah. And the last thing is today, we had a really great, energy is a big thing across the curriculum in science. And so the energize guys came and they really encouraged the kids to be energy superheroes. So they wanted to turn off lights and do all this. So they send these little cards home with them. And if they bring this, fill this card out and bring it back, we send them all in. And everybody will, each household, we mailed one of these boxes that you have and you get it for free of charge. You get it. And it's like LED light bulbs and just different kinds of cool things in there. And the kids, they learn like little rhymes and and things. But the school, they know that if their teacher, if everyone brings it back, their teacher can get fifty dollars to use in their classroom. Their their parents can be put in a drawing to win fifteen hundred dollars. And if we, you know, have the most people bringing them back, our school can win twenty five hundred dollars. So, you know, that's a cool thing. But they they'll get one of these in the mail. So that's your gift for tonight.
Same to you. Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's all I, oh, one other thing, Kay Keck and and her crew. I, every year, we send, I don't know if you know that we do this, we send ornaments to the troops over in the Middle East or wherever they are overseas. We do that every single year. Well, this year, Mrs. Ambrose just said, let's make ornaments, paper folded ornaments. And you can lay them flat and the whole thing. They don't cost a lot. So we had to cut all these things out, these circles and stars and things. And Sarah Smith and I looked at each other and like, how are we gonna do this? And we have this troop of parents, Kay Keck and her crew, and they came in, they came in today and they worked on cutting this out. They think they're coming back next week. And we love having them. And they love being here. And it makes me happy to have parents like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
So that's it. That's the elementary school in a nutshell for October. I'll have more in November.
I just have a short one. Dallas is in Columbus. He and Damon are presenting to the Rural Appalachian Education Association on our Global Logistics Program.
Great.
We're one of the few schools in the state that have Global Logistics. So they're being kind of being shocked around a little bit down in Columbus tomorrow. And I'll be back tomorrow afternoon, but they're showcasing our program. We currently have sixteen kids in the program.
Wow.
We started with twenty one, but the schedule's somewhat moved. But we've started now contacting all of the partners. We're setting up a partner lunch in to bring them in to sit down with the kids. And then we're doing field trips with the kids going out to different places. The Y S U is looking at Global Logistics, so we're gonna send the kids down. They're trying to combine it with STEM a little bit. So we'll send the kids to Y S U to look at that program. But that's where he's at tonight. On October nineteenth, he gave you a little bit of report. He and I have been talking a lot about how we can better expose our kids to other things. So October nineteenth, southern local students will be coming here to hook up with our kids from sixth to eighth grade or sixth through twelfth grade to let them see what it's like here. And then our kids will go back back down there. And we're working out somewhere with Campfield, Lordland also down. So our kids could get a feel for different places a little bit. And then down the road, we're we're trying to work out some teacher exchanges for a few days. Let teachers go and look and see.
That's pretty cool.
See what would. They're coming. I got someone to say. But the idea is to expose them to as many different things as you possibly can because when they leave here, they're gonna be exposed to it. They go to different schools.
Wow, that's awesome.
We're trying to get, we have several schools right now that we're gonna be training with. But the teacher one is is something we have to work out. Most schools are are pretty good with that for a day. Send a teacher. And they stay there with their teacher.
I like that.
Send a blog match up. It shows to you.
That would be fun.
And we'd take, and we'd take Mark.
Bob will like that.
He would.
But we'd take Mark if he had to take a day.
He would take Mark, but sure. Bob does a concert in, so it's kinda fun. No, sit down here. That's really, Debbie talked about PBIS. The PBIS program is really helping with attendance. We've done Dennis, in fact, and Joel and I served hot dogs and we talked about that last month. But it does make a difference with kids. You give them positive reports. They just did a PBIS program last week. So it's all part of that positive behavior as well as trying to hook it all in with the House Bill four ten, which is a truancy law. Because you no longer can suspend for truancy attendance. It's a whole big, long list that you have to go through before you can do that. And we're currently in the middle, and Debbie will tell you, writing our policy. And it's just very cumbersome. And it's very time consuming. It includes more people.
My dad.
So because now you have to, you really have to start with the parent. And then you work your way through five to ten steps before you get to the court. And then even the court was a court. Realistically, once a court has a juvenile court does not wanna deal with truancy. And Judge Alex Court is dealing with, you know, child murderers, molesters, rapists. They're not dealing with truancy. That's become on the back burner. So what the state has done is pushed it back to the schools and said, you deal with it.
But honestly, truancy is not a kid problem at a young age. It's a parent problem.
No, truancy is a parent problem.
Yeah, up until they're like high school, they're, you know, I mean, come on, once they're high school, they're gonna be accountable for themselves. But when they're seven, are they gonna get up and get on the bus?
And the funny thing I'll tell you is I know for a fact that through working through this program, Debbie has not made some friends. But parents have to understand, kids have to be in school. They're not gonna learn if they're not here. And if you go back and look at their scores and look at their attendance, it's it's just amazing. And one of her fifth graders from last year missed, he's been to court three different times, nothing happened. It's mom. It's not him.
Right. And that's what's sad is you don't wanna take it out on the kid because you know.
So this year, after he's been through a lot of things, he very rarely misses that. He's doing great in class. Everybody encourages him when they see him. You know, good to see him.
Success.
Again, it's a success story, but it hasn't changed mom. Because.
Sadly, if she doesn't change right now, she's probably not going to.
She's probably not gonna change.
Parents not gonna change. You know, and we say that because we're empathetic, we're teachers, we want to help kids. But after a while, you say, even by third grade, then you have to empower the kids. Because you know what? You can't use that for an excuse. You want the kids to be here. So what you do is you empower them and you say, you know, if I have to buy them an alarm clock, you get them an alarm clock and you say, this is what you're setting your alarm clock for. You have to get up. If you miss a bus, call us. Here's our phone number. So we want them to be.
Being a grandparent.
Yeah, we. Right. We wanna empower because we can say, yes, it's a parent's fault. And we all agree with you a hundred times over. But you you come to a point where you have to get that kid to say, and you have to make them, because a lot of the kids want to come to school. So and as you said, with the with the hardest thing about this new House Bill four ten, you have to keep track of hours. It's not days anymore. It's hours. So you can imagine, we're a small school. It's a bear. You think about kids who sign out for half a day or come come to school two hours late. It's so, that was a big conversation at Curriculum Council today was, how are people monitoring that? And no one is. There are there are programs you can buy, but they're expensive and it's an annual cost. We talked about, one district talked about having them sign in and out electronically. And then you have an electronic stamp. But it's still taking that information and putting it into a spreadsheet so you can track it. So right now, what we're doing is we're meeting weekly. I'm pulling attendance sheets and like cumulative attendance on, now I can kind of know the kids that I need to really watch. And the teachers are on watch. And so we're lucky because we don't have a lot. But Youngstown City, Austintown, I mean, that's a bear.
A lot of the schools have attendance.
They do. That's all they do.
It's ridiculous.
It's a bear. It's a bear. For us, it's a lot because you're monitoring hours. And after so many hours, you have to send a letter. And after so many hours, you have to do another letter and a visit. And so keeping track of hours is a lot. So, yeah. But it's, I mean, we have a great team and I think we're we're doing the best we can with it.
We brought in the early warning system, EWS from the juvenile court, Monica and Linda McNally.
Linda McNally and Monica.
And Monica, yeah, to help us with that because they already set those programs up. They were part of that five school grant the county did that had to jump in. Down the road, you hadn't sustained the program. Well, we didn't have a hundred thousand dollars just to sustain the program. So we've been able to jump in with them now through favors to piggyback. So they're coming out here to to work with us. It's no charge.
There'll be home visits, there'll be home visits with us. And we do home visits. I mean, I've gone to homes before and we do home visits. We meet with parents. And I bring them in and I really try to work with them. I mean, I'm not here to make them mad. But I try to work with them and, you know, no, we're on the same team. But we have people, we have parents that had, they had negative experiences at school themselves. So you really have to try to get them on the same page as you because your whole goal is to get them.
School's not important enough.
It's not. Well, and they have bad experiences, a lot of them did. And so, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Richard, I'm glad about that. Being a county truancy officer for thirty five years, you know, Bob, you guys did it all by yourselves. And you know, I can't tell you the number of interventions we did with kids in Austintown every week, you know, with you guys.
At least twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty or more.
And again, it all comes back to.
And that was just in Austintown.
Yeah. It still comes back to making the parents responsible to get the kids to school.
Half the time, the parents wouldn't even show up. We had the kid, the parents wouldn't come.
So that problem has never gone away for thirty five years.
Yeah. I don't think it ever will, but it's a good try. Good try.
The key is at least you're making a little bit of a dent. But going to the hours, it's if they, say, for example, a parent has two kids, one in the middle school and the elementary, and they need to pick up the middle schooler. They're gonna take the elementary kid too. Because a lot of times, if they're driving, they're not coming back and forth.
Yeah, that one I did make first.
If they, yeah, that one's not a good friend. But that's okay. Because some people have to understand.
Probably somebody's up and enrolled then, or they drive the bus.
That makes, that half hour a day is an hour and a half a week.
Yeah.
And within a semester, you're now on the radar with juvenile court. So you can't do that every day. Because once you hit that thirty eight hours, you're in trouble. You know, so. And and some of those parents don't like this and it's okay. You know, it's fine. But bottom line is to get the child to be here and achieve.
And not suspending them.
Yeah.
Is a great idea because in the past, if all you did was suspend it and the kid figures, hey, you know, you just sent me out of school for ten days.
They didn't wanna come again. Exactly.
More time on school.
You know, so not coming back.
They need to be here.
Yeah. Agreed. Okay, thank you. Dennis, it's good to see you here.
Thank you. I love being here.
Really is.
I was gonna say, Tower Report, but I like the moment because I didn't rest a word much. Actually, I feel what Debbie said, the pop-up lunch, I stepped outside that day. And it sounded like recess out there. I mean, those kids were absolutely loving every second of it. I love PBIS. I love the program. I'm thankful to be a part of it. I love the environment here. It's as good as it's ever been, if not better.
You're a good fit, though. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I I love the administration. I love being back. I I'm home again.
You love having me back.
Thank you. I couldn't be happier.
I told you when you came back, I cried.
You have to go watch the speech.
Oh, I can, yeah.
Seriously.
Are you still bringing the dog?
Yes.
Okay, I heard about the dog.
He brings the dog.
He brings the dog to class.
Really?
The kids love it.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything. It's just awesome. I couldn't be happier and more thankful.
Well, it's just, thank you.
Thank you.
We're glad to hear.
So you're gonna give the Tower Report as well?
Jerison, tell them everything's good. Shorter, more.
Yeah, that's a good follow up for Debbie. I'm kidding, though. We love you.
She's not.
You're up.
I'm gonna talk a lot already.
You did.
You did.
I love you guys too.
I hit him for like nine hours with the dog.
Wow.
I started my morning off with her just giving that look because she's a New York Yankee fan.
Well, I don't like that shirt at all. That's awful.
She just gave you.
That's the whole reason I sent you the thing.
She sent you the emoji.
She did.
You don't even get what I sent you.
I feel like I had to try.
Did look at it.
So I started my morning with, she didn't say or though.
I don't have to.
No, you don't have to.
She just has it right there.
It pains to be a.
It really does.
It just pains me.
Things go along or whatever.
Stick with them still. I did give you a couple packets. We've talked last month about a little about testing. And I'm not gonna go through the packets because it would take.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love you.
But when you get a chance to look at, this is the value added part of the instruction. And when you look at the value add, this gives you the true picture of how well the kids are achieving. The performance indicator, eighty percent of the state had Fs in performance indicators. Eighty percent. What does that tell you? They did, they moved the target up. They increased the number of indicators and they wanna make public school.
And what they feel to achieve with that, like what did they really feel?
To make public education with that.
To make us look better.
Uh, but each one of these, it gives you the four value added tests for English Language Arts one and two and then Algebra and Geometry. Tremendous growth at the high school. Just tremendous growth at the high school. As well as when you're looking, it has tested and accountable. Accountable tells you how the lower part of the group did. The middle part, they broke them into five groups. And it gives you an idea of how each one achieved. That's the second part of each of these papers. And it gives you an idea of last year and this year. This year, if you look, we're all green with one, just on the first one, just English Language Arts.
Yes, that, so this green means that we're.
The green means that you have shown moderate growth way beyond. The yellow shows that you're making.
So everyone's green.
Yes. And that shows you a lot of how much the high school jumped last year from what, you know, the year before last year. They didn't do Science and Social Studies because there's options in Science and Social Studies. So they didn't do that comparison at the state high school level. Not for those. The middle school and elementary papers, again, you see tremendous growth in each area. And it's broken down into the English on the front page. And overall, when you look at growth, your advanced kids grew four, one percent. It's this one.
Who stapled these?
Well, I didn't wanna put the staple up here because if you flip.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So I stayed with the bottom. Does it frustrate you?
Well, it really does.
Yes, my God, I did it to.
It's totally wrong to staple it like that. I mean, who would even do that?
I did because I didn't want you to do it.
Why did you even have to ask?
It's this way. It's easy, see? It drops down.
It's so easy.
Debbie, help me out now.
He stapled it. Look where he stapled it. I'm here.
And the other one he did.
So they can do this way.
The other one, he did the top right corner.
That was helpful.
Yeah, this one was stapled right. And it's all, both of them the opposite side, though.
This person doing it was awesome. It was cool.
What the hell have you done?
Remember I go to the elementary, you have a little wide.
Dennis, help me out.
Like a very wide.
Anyways, I'm not gonna read it all to you. But when you get time and you're bored, when you get time, I just like to keep you up to date on what. But the value added and this part of the growth is really what's important. Because this shows you how they grew and the percentages they grew and where you expected them to be, we would weigh up.
So do you anticipate more changes? Or do you think we'll do better this time?
I think we'll do, I think we'll keep doing better. Because I think the change in both in the math curriculums was huge. I think that was a big move in the right, right spot. And we put a lot of effort and a lot of money into the two new curriculums. And and even the high school level with the calculators. But I think what it's done is it's challenged the kids more. It's challenged our staff more. And sometimes staff isn't always comfortable with change. They fight that.
And it's helped them think. It's helped kids think for themselves. They have to think through a problem. It's not just, this is what you do. You think, yeah, they have to think for themselves. And that's probably.
Remember the ACC Math where everybody had five thousand problems a week?
Yes.
Well, this now, we've got it to a point where with the Carnegie and the Mafia, things are more, you might have five, I'll truly do math, I'm gonna do ten. She might have two.
So what are you saying, I'm not gonna?
I'm just saying, we, it's set up now so that those kids don't feel like they're swamped.
Well, that's the thing. They feel like they're punished.
So it's catered to their needs and what they.
It's catered to their needs and it's very parent friendly.
Do you think they changed the format of these tests because schools were doing too good?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
That's sad.
It's like the OGT. We're the OGT because they figured it out. Proficiency test. Get rid of those who go to the OGT.
I mean, you do what you're supposed to do.
The S R A. Do you remember the S R A?
At least they're also upping grades because at some point, everyone has to score a hundred and ten.
Yeah.
Because we're maybe last year. So we're gonna begin this year. So eventually, all the kids have to score a hundred and ten.
And then it'll change again.
Because we know our performance score is a hundred and ten.
Oh, yeah, really. That's reality.
We're perfect.
Makes me, makes my head spin. And as a teacher, I can't even imagine.
It's always changing.
The staff here wants to please, we have to be able to see the target.
And it's nice when they can see, when they can see, hey, these kids improved thirteen percent.
Yeah. That's huge. That's huge.
You know, and we got good staff, we have a really great staff, the hardworking. Yep. And as we get better, state's gonna move it again. Now.
Right.
Yesterday, they came out with their move to change some of the state mandates. They were gonna change in some of the testing. And it's just, it's gonna be.
How do you get on a panel like that? Because I think, Missy, we need to do something like that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Need a parent.
Who do you? When they ask for volunteers.
Seriously, how do we get to do that?
I'll submit your names. They meet monthly.
I would like that.
You can testify to Ohio Department.
Yeah, I'll tell you. I'll tell you stuff.
Because I think they need grounded people.
They need, they need, and the problem is they have people all inside the belt in Columbus that always think.
We need, yeah.
Think the same.
And the same people are talking against them all the time, or educators.
Well, we'd do that. I mean, I would.